Yeah, I can hear background noise, yeah. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I'm only looking at the ceiling, though. That's better.
Alright.
Are you talking in a mic?
Yes.
I'm gonna take this off, so that everybody can hear better. About fourteen months ago, in a discussion at the January board meeting, commission meeting, we talked about the need to begin to look at updating the 2008 comprehensive plan. State regulations call for it being updated on a more regular basis than we had been doing. So we decided that we would at least begin to get ourselves organized in that fashion. We also talked at that time about including some funds in our capital improvement program for this current year, the 2021 year, for the start of that comprehensive plan update. We also decided that it would be good in the meantime to get the flavor of what our community wants and feels about certain things going on today as well as tomorrow. So we, Alex and I got together and we put together a survey for the community, which would look at exactly what I just said. Number one, it would look at certain things today, how things are going, and then secondly, get public opinion on the, certain ideas that had actually come in from the 2008 plan, just to see how they felt about it today. The survey is not intended to kick off the process of the comprehensive plan update. That would be a formal process that would occur at some point in the future. And unfortunately, we were not able to keep those funds in our budget for this current year because of COVID, so we deferred that. And we are entertaining that, and hopefully we'll be able to include something for that in the 21, 22 budget cycle. Nonetheless, what we decided to do is go ahead with that survey and get a feel for those various thoughts of our community. And we did. In March of last year, this time last year, we received 235 responses to a survey that was promoted through the Montreique Minute and through some special emails. And we received a number of responses from both the community and even the homeowners, as well as those outside the community. In fact, we received responses from ninety, or no reference, 93.3% of the responses that we received were from property owners, about half and half, about 48% from full-time residents, and 45% from part-time residents. The rest were either, there were no college students who responded, but there were others who work here, others who play here, and no, and apparently are on our sunshine list. So with that, let me just say a couple more things about this before we get kicked off on it. What you have in front of you is a summary. It is a summary of all 235 responses for not all of the questions. There were ten questions on the survey, but not, two of them are not included here, just because of the volume of information. So what we're gonna do today is just really look at it and have some discussion about it. And hopefully, these results can be turned over to a comprehensive plan update committee, and they can, and it can inform them in what they begin to do. Let me stop there and ask Alex if he has anything else to add to it, or if anybody has any questions.
I do not have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Tom, I have a question. You mentioned that those students responded to the survey. They weren't informed of it, any special communication, or would they have done better off through the Montreique Minute and other, our traditional?
Uh, they were, they were informed through, really, two media. One was the Montreique Minute on the usual Fridays, but also we sent out, gosh, how many did we send out, Angie? Probably four or five special emails over that list. And then it was also in, on the website.
Okay, but so this was just a function of their choosing not to respond?
Say that again.
This was a function of their choosing not to respond?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. Any other questions or comments on process? Okay, let me just also say that every single question that was asked has a series of comments. I did not include those comments, well, most of those comments I did not include in the summary that you have in front of you, simply because of volume. But I encourage particularly board members to go back and look at those comments, and I would direct you specifically to questions two, three, and five. Look at, and you have that in the 93 page somewhere. That's where those, those comments are. If you don't have that available to you, just let Angie or me know, and we will get it to you, okay? One of the things that, that I always used to say to people when I was doing summaries of market research, is that the quantitative, the numbers themselves, provide the black and white data. What the comments do is they add a color commentary to it. They will tell you why people were saying what they said in the black and white numbers, okay? That's why the comments are important, to read alongside, okay? Alright, well, let's go ahead and get started. And please, jump in with any questions as we're going along. The first page is simply the demographics of who we heard from. You'll see in the first pie chart is respondent age, thirty-five and a half percent of all respondents. The largest single grouping was age sixty-five to seventy-four, and then it distributes accordingly up and down, twenty-three point percent from the seventy-five to eighty-four category, and twenty-one point eight percent from the fifty-five to sixty-four category. How long have they been coming to Montreique? Very interesting distribution here. Seventy-six point five percent of all respondents have been coming here at least twenty-five years. And you'll see that the largest single group is the group that has been coming here all my life. Alex, would you be able to put this up on the screen? I think it might be helpful for those who might not have it. And then finally, resident status, I just commented on that earlier, that you can combine categories. So I combined the property owners, part-time and property owners, full-time to come up with that, ninety-three point three percent, thanks Alex, for the total of property owners. And you can see that there's a small grouping of others, renters, part-time, work in Montreique, play in Montreique essentially, and no college students responded, as I mentioned. The very first question was a gestalt question, if you will. What three words or phrases would you use to describe Montreique to others? This is, this is an important question because it is an unaided question. That means that you're just asking for people to think off the top of their head to give you an answer, as opposed to an aided question where you're giving them some ideas that you're asking them to vote on, so to speak. So the very first chart that you see here is the first mentions, and in any research, the first mentions are the most important, because that's top of mind. That's what they're thinking of when they're reading that question. And just to let you know, we had 217 responses to this question, of which 193 of them were positive responses, nineteen of them were neutral responses, if you will, couldn't tell whether it was positive or negative. And two percent, or four of them, were negative responses. So overwhelming, people have wonderful thoughts about Montreique. And you can see there, this is called a word cloud, or a worm. And what it does is it picks up, it graphically portrays the high frequency word uses. So not only does the color represent the frequency, but also the size of the word. And you can see that beautiful, anything having the word beautiful in it was the number one response. I also included beauty with that, which gave it a total of fifty-seven mentions out of 217. That's about 26% of everybody who answered this question used the word beautiful or beauty to describe Montreique. The second most frequent response was peaceful, but it was about half, less than half of those that used the word beauty, about 11%. That's a big difference there, 26% to 11%. And then it drops pretty far down. We get still multiple mentions of words like community, place, and unique, and mountains, welcoming, green sanctuary, and so forth. Let me stop there and just get any reactions or thoughts. No surprises from Tim. Anybody else? Gosh, you guys are a silent crew today. Alright, well, let's go on then. The, the second, or the, the page behind that one, what three words, phrases would you use to describe Montreique to others? I took all 637 responses and did a content analysis on them, and put them into these seven categories that you see there. They would fall into the beautiful, beauty, peaceful, friendly, community, place, safe, and unique. And again, you can see that, that they are pretty, pretty much the same as this, the top of mind response. The word friendly moved up considerably from the previous chart, but beautiful, beauty, peaceful, friendly, and community are way up there in terms of how they would describe Montreique. Questions or comments on that? Okay. We started real broad, now we get specific with this next question of how satisfied are you with the following at Montreique? These are Montreique services that they are rating. What you are looking at there is a distribution response chart. So the green bar that you see under administrative services, and under each of those, for example, it represents the number of people who said they were extremely satisfied, all the way over to the, the orange, which you don't see much of, extremely dissatisfied. The upper chart was ordered alphabetically. The bottom chart is ordered in terms of overall satisfaction. So there, this is a five-point scale, so the maximum that they could receive was five points. And you can see that we had three departments that tied for the top score of 4.4. Now, that's 4.4 out of five possible points. If you were to convert this to a 100-point scale, just double it. So that would be, police would get 88 points out of 100 possible points. Same with sanitation, same with water. The, the second highest is administration with a 4.3, and then roads and streets with a 4.1, and then we drop off with building services and planning and zoning at 3.3, 3.6. So we go from, again, using that 100-point scale, we go from an 88 down to a 72, if you will. Now, again, remember that if they are satisfied, they either give it a four or a five, and you can see that one, two, three, four, five out of the seven departments, there's at least a four or higher. The, the 3.7 and the 3.6 represent the fact that they're neutral on it. Not that they're dissatisfied, but that they're neutral on it. They were, you mean the town hall was not in existence? Or the public works building? That's correct. Along with this were 77 comments from people that, after they filled out the quantitative question, they, they just put some comments down. And of those 77 comments, really, a lot of them were positive. And there were a few negative. The two categories where we got negative responses were road quality and water quality. And I find that interesting, and sometimes you find some enigmas here. Even though water got a 4.4 tied for top department score, there were a lot of comments about the color of the water, the taste of the water, and so forth. I, again, would really commend to you that you look at those comments that are in that unabridged version, just to see how they responded to it. Questions or comments or reactions?
Hey, Tom?
Yes, Kitty?
Um, I can hear you okay, but I can't hear anybody else. I encourage you to talk real close to the mic. I have my volume turned totally up, and I'm just sort of barely hearing you and can't hear anybody else.
Okado. Thank you for that. Not very many people have been talking since then, besides me, but we heard your message and we'll put our mics right up to our mouths.
Okay, and, and Alex, I've got the, look at the screen again.
You can't see the chart? Kitty, you can't see the chart?
I've got the chart on my own computer, but my Zoom screen just shows Zoom.
Okay.
It was doing that before the meeting, and Alex fixed it, but now it's back doing that again. I don't know if it's doing it for anybody at home or not, but I would think so.
Department heads, I would really suggest that you guys go through these comments and share the really positive comments with your staff. And for those where there are some complaints, especially if they are not directed to any individuals, share those as well. This can really help provide some direction of where you may want to focus some of your efforts. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Alright. Moving along. Next question, how satisfied are you with the performance of the current town council? As you can, as you can see, again, you can collapse categories with this data. So if you look, there were 45.65% of the responses indicating they were very satisfied with the current town council, and 27.4% saying they were just satisfied. You can add those together, so the overall satisfaction rating for the current town council is 73% satisfied. As opposed to those that were dissatisfied, you add those two together, and we have about 10.9% that were, that are, that at that point in time were dissatisfied with the performance of the town council. Let me just make one point real clear here. You can see that there were 25 responses in the dissatisfied and in the very dissatisfied category. We left this survey, with this, any kind of a survey like this, you can cut it off for one person responding on a computer, or you can leave it open for multiple people to respond. We discussed it, we decided to leave it open because oftentimes a husband and a wife will use the same computer. That's why we left it open. I will tell you that five of the 25 negative responses came from the same computer. Don't know who it is, but five of them came from the same computer. What did you say, Scott? Yes. Okay. What do we learn from this? Well, again, our overall score was a 4.1, so look at it in relation to the town services scores. If, again, if you want to convert it to a 100-point scale, that's an 82 out of 100 points. Now, what suggestions? Well, let me ask questions on this one. Any questions or comments from anyone on this particular question?
Tom, I have a question.
Sure.
Kitty, can you hear me?
Yes.
On the, what you just described as leaving the question open, and that these responses came from the same computer, these five, five of these responses came from the same computer, is that five different people in one household? Is that one husband and four wives? One wife and four husbands? Is it children, grandchildren? Do we know? Truly, it's?
We don't know.
It says, it could be the same person filling it out?
That's right. And when I say the same computer, it, it's the same IP address for the computer. So we have no idea whether it was the same person responding five times, or whether it was five different people in the same household. I would doubt that. We just don't have that kind of residence, size of, 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 of.
I don't want to get too technical, but however on here, I'll ask it. An IP address, could a computer be taken, say, from my house with my IP address, down to the tripleator?
No.
It, it is tied to that computer, in that location?
And that internet service?
Yes, 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 yes. That was my understanding. Thank you for confirming.
There were 55 comments that we received, and again, I commend the Board of Commissioners and Mayor to look at those 55 comments, because they're pretty good to learn from. Of those 55 comments, 28 of them were positive, 15 of them were just neutral. I couldn't determine whether they were positive or negative, and 13 of them were negative. And there were some, very positive ones, and there were some negative ones about our performance, as you would expect. What do you think?
Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is amazing data. Thank you for getting it done, and certainly reading all those comments, the 93 pages has been just a wonderful experience to know that this, that this is raw data, which is extremely important to us, and I'm grateful to those 265, 35 people who completed the survey. Thank you.
I want everybody to remember that it's just a snapshot in time. That's where they
That's where they were at that time they took the survey. Doesn't mean that they're that satisfied today.
In fact, to Tim's point, you'll see some issues that, that came up in the comments, both positive and negative, that were relative to what was going on at that time that has been resolved since, so his point is well taken.
Tom?
Yes?
Let me just clarify, I did not in any way mean by that comment to indicate that I was agreeing or disagreeing, or celebrating or not celebrating any of these results. My point is that getting views from people in our community is absolutely critical. And I just think you've done a stellar job all the way through this, getting this done.
Well, thank you, Allison. I, I don't think either one of us took it that way. And you know, I think if we're handing out kudos here, we need to hand out kudos to the residents for having participated and participated so thoughtfully with their, with their comments and their, their completions. You know, 217 completed surveys. There were 235 who started it and to some degree finished it, but 217 completed surveys. And that's really unheard of, at least to my, in my experience. We also asked a question of, what suggestions for improvement do you have for the town council? Take this question, put it with the comments from question number three, and you get a really good picture of what folks think we should be focusing on and what we're doing well, and what we're not doing so well. Okay? So let me go over question five. What suggestions for improvement do you have for the town council? Again, there were, there were 100, roughly 198 responses to this question. And again, what I did is I went through and did a content analysis and created categories that, that they would fall in. And you can see on the, those next two pages, pages seven and eight, of the summary that I handed out, what those categories are. 34 of the 98 comments were, "You don't need to do anything for improvement. You're doing a good job." That's 35% of total mentions. It drops from 34 down to 13 for the next category, which is public works projects. Lots of comments about streets and roads, garbage, better signage, carry out the repair on Texas Road Bridge, that was mentioned a couple of times, and a, a, a more aggressive road maintenance schedule. These are the verbatim comments that, that were representative of that particular category. So 13 people mentioned public works projects. The next most frequent category was "Our listening, our responding, and how we treat others." There were 12 mentions. Probably the most frequently mentioned was, of the 12, I think it was referenced about four or five times, was "Answer your emails." You can see, answer emails, listen, respond to emails. Let me read you the, well, I guess I'll read it to the stack. You can see, again, the treatment of others. It was listed under category three. By the way, Tim and I talked about this and thought it would be good for you to see the actual comments themselves for this particular question. And I keep my mind on this here, but yeah, here it is. You have verbatim responses to, what are the, no, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself. Forget what I just said. Never mind. But I do commend to you to go back and look at those 55 comments. Okay. Fourth category was process and procedure regarding transparency, sharing liaison responsibility so that those who are too busy out of town can have help among council members. There was another comment in question number three about the performance that added some color to that comment. Someone said, "There doesn't seem to be the commitment to the areas that elected council members are assigned to, to support. Several do not show up at meetings of community boards and committees, nor do they ask for others to participate in their absence. They also do not respond regularly to written communications." I think that's what this person was trying to say. I don't know if it was the same person or not that wrote both of these comments, but if you're wondering what that meant, I think that's what that means. And again, to, to elaborate one more time on Tim's comments, it had to do with where people's minds were at the time, and you have to look at the frequency of those comments. If we're seeing a bunch of comments like that and we really do need to improve, if we're only seeing isolated comments, take it seriously, but maybe not as seriously as if there were a number of comments about that issue. Number five category, zoning ordinance enforcement. Nine mentions there out of the total of 98, so 10% of the responses had to do with that. Fixing unfriendly zoning ordinances, establishing and enforcing the noise and visual pollutions, working on traffic noise and speeding, storm, storm drainage, review the 10-year plan. Those are the kind of comments that came in under that category. The sixth category was, with four mentions, was what I called long-term development. Reopening Lake Susan. Same person said, "Put a nice little restaurant on the lake." Someone else said, "Diverge the main road into Montreat around the gate." Someone else said, "Show some grit and determination to manage the development issues." Remember, they're talking to us, the council, in this particular question. And find ways to foster growth. And then the largest category, besides nothing, keep doing what you're doing, was what I've just put in, all others. These were unrelated suggestions, but important because they were ones or twos to margin Let me ask. We've just gone through Montreat today with these, these four questions. Any surprises, what you expected, any takeaways?
Tom, I didn't have any surprises at all. I, I just, it's just, it's food for thought in a lot of areas. I mean, there's things that we need to concentrate on in the future that we haven't necessarily neglected. I think that we have paid attention to some other things that we've been working on. I think in the future, in the long-range plan, that hopefully it'll show up and actually the things that we need to work on, the things that people want. You know, I see streets, more money for the power bill money wherever we're going to get it, for streets and things. I don't know what that's going to end up on. I don't really have any surprises.
Thanks, Tim. How about the rest of you? Ken, you've been quiet.
Yeah, takeaway that I would see is, kind of jot it down in what you've gone over so far, is there's always going to be specific needs or desires from our community. I mean, it's evident, better roads, trash pickup, whatever it might be, there's going to be a variety of those. But I think if I summarized, I would say, you know, what I'm really hearing is communication with respect. And I think that goes both ways, us to our neighbors and our neighbors to the, to the council. And I think, and I put listen, respond, and transparency. And I think that's got to be an active listening, but I also think that these type of materials, there's obviously plenty of ways to reach out, but if we can hear from our community, that's going to, I think, help us in the way that we approach certain country.
Yeah, communication is an important thing to our residents, as you can see from a lot of the comments. How about at the other end?
I've got one that just makes me laugh, makes me smile. And this is just the way that, in some cases, we have interacted, and that is in response to emails. I do believe every email should be responded with, "Got it," if nothing else. But I also, and I have not done that because I know that occasionally we've gotten the same email, all of us, and have consciously chosen not for all of us to respond to the person's concern because it seems to be overloading email and wanting to be sensitive that the, the person in the community who raised an issue among, to all five of us or six of us, including the mayor, might not want to hear six responses of, "I, I have your email and we'll be back in touch."
You know, Allison...
That, that makes me more attuned to that's not sufficient, even though that's what in some cases we have chosen to do.
Uh, I was thinking the same thing, not only in relation to the comments here, but we've been getting a lot of emails, all of us, on the same distribution list. And maybe one of the things that we would want to talk about is, should we have a, a process or some kind of a, a way that we rotate response? Or, or one person gets designated to respond? We can't write each other and say, "I'll take this one," because, you know, we can't respond to all five. So we're kind of in a, our own communications vacuum and not even knowing if anybody else is writing back to any of those people. So we're kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place. What do you think, Tim?
Um, I have, I have a, I have a comment on that. I, I start the emails, and then on the next one it said, "Share liaison responsibilities." Maybe that would be a good way to break up emails that are sent to us at home, that the person that, the subject is addressed to.
A lot of times, especially lately, all you can do is say, "Thank you. I hear what you're saying and I understand your situation." And that's about it. There's a lot of things, if you answer and you say the wrong thing, the town, you know, honestly can get the heck suit out of them because they'll take it to, the person may take it to, to heart that you have given the answer that the town is going to give. You speak for the town when you respond. You're not speaking as an individual. You're speaking for the council a lot of times, and the town. So you've got to be very careful in how you answer these emails, and that's why a lot of them immediately copy. Alex and Angela, and my reply to the person is, "Thank you. I received your, your information and thank you for making me aware of it." And the most recent particular case is that there is a process in place to take care of these situations, and you need to wait and be patient and follow the process. And processes in most every case come through either the planning and zoning, Board of Adjustments, Planning and Zoning Officer, get it repaired with the public works people, or through Alex. You know, it's, it's one of those. And a lot of times, we have to go to our attorney before we can actually respond. You have to be most careful in responding. You know, you can respond to every email by saying, "Thank you. I appreciate your, your interest and appreciate your input and I hear you." And that's what I do most of the time.
But you know, that burden shouldn't necessarily fall always on your shoulders unless you want it. And I think what, what I heard in some of these comments was that silence is deafening. And they, they just want to know that they had been heard. And I think most people would understand with a response like you just described, which would relate to some of the issues that we're getting from people lately. So, you know, maybe it's just something that we need to work through, and Alex can help us come up with a plan.
Tom? Hey, Tom?
Any other questions or comments?
Tom, can you hear? I was thinking about your question, you know, of what we thought about all of it...
Can't hear you, Kitty.
Can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Try it now.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The question about what we felt about this, when I read some of these comments, I, you know, I thought, "That's not true." But whoever wrote the comment, that's their perception, and to them it is true. So I, you know, as hard as it is to read some of these comments, that person sees it that way, or that person, it is true.
So what do you think? So what are you saying?
Well, I'm just, that's it. That was just a statement, not a question. That some of these comments are hard to take, and I don't think some of them are correct, but for the person that wrote them, it is correct. It's the way they see it.
Yeah, perception is reality.
Right. Just a reminder.
Any other questions, comments, takeaways? P&amp;Z folks, any comments from you?
Notice that. Wasn't going to mention it, but notice that.
All right, then let's move on. As I said, the, the first portion was, how do they feel about things today? This last series of three questions has to do with what they see from Montreat tomorrow and in the future. The first question, again, is a top-of-mind question, unaided. What are the three most important issues facing the town in the next five to 10 years? There were 481 individual responses to this question. You're saying, "Well, how could that be? There were only 235 people responding." Because they, many people gave us three, three responses. Some didn't, but that's why we have 481 individual responses to this question. Let me, let me just say too, that I think, in my own estimation, that of all the questions in the survey, this is the most important. Not only does it have to do with what people are thinking of for Montreat in the future, but it also doesn't put words in their mouth the way that the next two questions do. This is, as I said earlier, an unaided question. Tell me what you're thinking, is what the question is really saying. What's important? What do you think are the most important issues for the town? Whereas the next two suggest issues and ask them to rate those issues, that's why this one... That's why this one is so important. So, once again, I did a content analysis of all 481 responses and looked at created categories for them as to where they might fall. And you can see those categories at the bottom of that page easier than reading the chart. But what we've got here is, of the 100, I'm sorry, of the 481 responses, 109 of them had to do with growth. Now, put this, this page, page nine, next to the next two pages, which are the explanation for the chart. Side by side, you can see that the growth category, which had 23% of all responses and was number one. If you look at those 109 responses, I could clearly tell by the way that they said it that 31% of those responses were against growth in Montreat. 19% favored growth in Montreat. And the largest category, 50%, I could not tell what they, what they were saying, because they would simply say growth or development. That was what they thought was the most important issue. So we've got to assume that they felt one side or the other, we just don't know what. But I think the takeaway for me is that, positive or negative, growth is on the top of the minds of the residents of Montreat. Comments?
You know, to me, the population growth doesn't help the tax base unless there's, unless there are buildings that go with it. There have got to be, you know, housing and population growth, to me, have got to go hand in hand. If we're going to share the burden, with population growth and housing growth, you're also taxing the facilities base, the infrastructure base, streets, water, things that we provide, all these weapons of police. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a tough little ball of thorns to handle. How do you get your growth? How do you grow the population without a lot more housing? And of course, what they absolutely said was no to is commercial growth is where you get your bigger tax base. So if everybody's willing to have their taxes continue to go up with no growth, then that's probably what's going to happen in the future for Montreat.
You know, Tim, that's an interesting comment. Like Kent, I've been reviewing the 2008 comprehensive plan over the last month or so. And even in that plan, they, the team that developed it commented that there were contradictions and unresolvable contradictions of, "We need more people to bring more taxes in, more commercial development, but nobody wants commercial development." So that little ball that you're talking about is pretty tightly in part separate.
Do away with the property tax, just start taxing every individual that lives up here. You know, if you want population growth, that would solve the problem, or start charging for every car that comes through the gate. Start charging a rental tax on every piece of property that's rented. There are other ways to get revenue from Montreat, and I don't think anybody's really going to be happy with any of those. Or there are going to be a lot of people who aren't happy with those other revenue getters. So I don't know where to go. I really honestly don't, and maybe that's why we need to have the most, another comprehensive plan to, to see what the feeling is today.
Flesh out those details, yeah. Continuing on with that, well, let me just say, that document that I was mixed up on earlier, the verbatim responses that I handed out, all of the verbatim responses for this particular question are included there, all 481 responses. In that growth development issues category, another couple highlights, 20% of the growth or development issue comments had to do with traffic and concern for growing traffic. And I was surprised at this, because one of the recommendations in the 2008 comprehensive plan was limited commercial development, and there were only five responses out of 481 regarding commercial development. Three of them were for it and two against it. I'm just really surprised it wasn't mentioned. And we'll see that later on in question number eight and nine. Infrastructure issues were the second most important issue they felt was facing the town in the next five to 10 years. 19% of all the responses had to do with infrastructure issues. If you broke that down, of those 91 responses, 51% of them, or about 45 of the 91, had to do with road or street concerns. This shouldn't surprise you, since we saw the many comments back earlier in the survey about roads and streets, but people really are concerned about future of roads. 14% had to do with water system concerns, everything from the wells drying up to whether or not they would stay pure. And 14% had to do with parking concerns. Number three issue was environmental issues. About 12% of all responses had to do with environmental issues. If you break that down further, about a third had to do with stormwater or erosion or flooding or something having to do with water concerns, not drinking water, but underwater issues. 22% were climate or global warming concerns, warming concerns. 14% of them were street or creek concerns. 14% were also tree concerns. And then 5% had to do with concerns regarding our wilderness, pristine nature of the wilderness. So you see, the first two issues, 109 responses and 91 responses, then we go to almost half of that with the environmental issues, 59 responses. And then we cut that in half again and get down to item number four, which had to do with stakeholder or entity issues. That's my vernacular for issues relating to town, MRA, and college. And of those 27 responses, 33% were concerned about the long-term viability of MRA and the college. 26% or about a quarter of them had to do with their concern for good relationships between the entities. And then finally, there were several concerns about the possibility of the college moving to Black Mountain. About that same level of responses were fiscal-related issues, again, about growth and development. 24 responses compared to 109 responses for fiscal. Of that, it broke down to 34% expressing concern for rising taxes, not being able to afford living here, those kinds of issues that they comment on. There were a number of comments regarding fiscal discipline on our part, spending. And there were several concerns about, stated, about the town's financial viability in the future.
Tom, can I...
Sure.
Speak to that?
Yep.
I find it interesting. So we started, then moves down to number five, fiscal-related issues. Again, I know it's out of 24 responses, 34% are concerned with rising taxes. But this goes a little bit back to, I think, I think if I heard the mayor correctly talking just a minute ago, as goes the MRA and the college and how they potentially have growth for it, that affects the financial well-being of our community. The environmental issues, which we've spent a tremendous amount of money due to some projects here recently on the environment, have been huge. Obviously, the infrastructure and the roads, that's, it goes up every year, unfortunately has been lately. Then it kind of comes back to growth and development. And I just find this is just a very, this goes back to my comment about proceeding or not proceeding with comprehensive plan. But I just feel like we have got to address, and as the mayor said, he said, "I'm not sure what point." I'm not either, but I just feel like when you look at that and the financial viability of our community, we have got to address some of these hard issues. And, you know, I can appreciate someone saying, "Hey, I want it just the way it was, don't grow it." And I'm not saying that I'm promoting growth or not at this particular moment, but we have to understand that all of this is going to interrelate, I think, moving forward as we just try to pave streets.
Yeah.
Without raising the taxes, you know, then there's, there's a rub here.
You saw that same issue being addressed in the 2008 comprehensive plan, that tension between those two issues. I actually did see it in these, if you look at the verbatim comments under other stakeholder entity issues, there is a lot of concern about those entities staying alive. One of the comments, and I'm quoting, "Protecting the college." Another one, "Protecting the conference center." Another one, "Thinking that maybe it wouldn't, the college wouldn't make it, replacing Montreat College." So, you know, it's not, the entity, as seen by the residents, are not negative. They are concerned about their viability, including ours as a town. Kitty, any comments from you?
Nope. Moving along. You asked me before if I could see it on the screen. I don't see it. Are people at home able to see the report?
Alex is nodding no.
Okay. All right, but I have it on my computer, so I'm looking at it.
Okay. All right, moving along, there were, number six, there were some responses regarding town government and service issues. There were many varied unrelated responses to that. There were four staff-related comments, and there were four zip code address-related comments. So when I say staff-related comments, you can see by just looking at it, "Attracting and retaining the most capable and productive staff. Administration has too many part-time positions." Those were the kind of comments related to staff. And then right up there with town government, in terms of the total number of mentions, was, again, getting along and the treatment of each other issues. So we saw that earlier in suggestions for the town council to work on. Likewise, you can see that there were 33% in their comments, about seven comments related to wanting cooperation and unity within this community. Then we get down to some other categories. Safety and security issues, I thought this was interesting. Six responses regarding speeding and traffic. Again, we saw traffic earlier and a much higher volume of concern. We see it here under security. There were five responses regarding wildfires here and the concern for this community regarding fire concerns. And four responses regarding the fact that you only have one exit. And we saw that also picked up in the 2008 comprehensive plan. The next category is what I would call status quo. I like it the way it is, and there were about 20 responses to that category. And 50% of them specifically say, "Keep Montreat, Montreat." And that goes back to that tension that both Kent and Tim talked about. Can't keep Montreat the way it is if we want to fix the roads or want to be a thriving And others saying, "Need growth," and you can't keep Montreat the way it is if you want growth. So it's a, it's a big tension that needs to be addressed. And the final category that I created was zoning and regulation issues. Only 17 responses in this category. One had to do, I'm sorry, not one. There were three or four related to overregulation, three or four related to more regulation. Comments about striking a balance between zoning ordinances and the severity of the zoning ordinances and regulations. And then there were several comments about those issues. Questions or comments on that? Yeah, sure. Could you grab it?
Hi, Scott Adams, zoning administrator for, as watching down. I've got to leave it on, sorry. The question, or I guess the issues on noise issues, I'm just curious, were those cited as summer, winter, falls, any certain type of...
They were not.
Okay.
You can see those in that last category, noise related issues. They're actually stated, but not, not to any specifics.
No seasonality, sorry. Okay, just curious, thank you.
Because really, Scott, there is no seasonality to the noise. Ask Dan over there about it. Now, if you look at the verbatim comments, there are some other categories that you'll see related to housing issues, demographic issues, more diversity, faith, religious issues, communications issues, project-related issues, and not classified elsewhere. But those were so few that I did not break them out the way I did these times. Okay, any further questions on that one? We're beginning to wrap it up, friends. I know it's tedious. The next question was a quantitative question, where we asked people to rate the importance of specific issues for the town in the next five to 10 years. This one came after they named the top three issues for the town, because we did not want to influence them in any way on that first question. But here, we specifically listed a number of issues that were in the 2008 comprehensive plan as issues, and you can see them here. Now, let me just talk a moment about distribution of responses. That colorful chart at the top shows what the distribution of responses is. So if you look at stormwater and... So if you look at stormwater and flooding, the very long green bar says that there are a lot of people that think stormwater and flooding is very important. Likewise, the health of Flat Creek, a lot of people, with that green bar being as big as it is, think it's very important. And you can just follow your eye down to just get a visual feeling for where people's minds are when they answer that question. Whereas, look at offering a variety, a wider variety of housing to renters, that very bottom one. The mustard-colored bar is pretty big. It's the biggest one of all of them. 36% said they were neutral on that, didn't really care one way or the other. So how did they all shake out when you actually scored them? That's what's down below in rank order by score. Above, it's alpha listing, or the way that it was listed in the question. Down below, it's rank order. So the most important issue for the town in the next five to 10 years, as seen by the residents or by the respondents, is the health of Flat Creek at a 4.7 out of a possible five points. Again, if you want to convert this to a five-point, to a 100-point scale, it'd be, it would get a 94. The next one, which is really related to that, of course, is stormwater and flooding. It is coming in right behind at a 4.6, or a score of 92. Then we've got development, redevelopment of land and structures at a 4.2. So we go from a 92 down to an 84 if you converted it to a 100-point scale. Population growth drops down. And again, you can always relate these back to how important is it? If you look at anything that's in the 3.5 to 2.5 range, it's really not all that important to them. They're neutral on it. Population growth has some importance to it. So does attracting younger people as residents. And then in the neutral categories are increasing the tax base, offering a wider variety of housing to renters, and commercial and retail development. Again, why these issues? Because they were part of the 2008 comprehensive plan as key issues. Questions or comments? I, again, would suggest that you go back, if you want detail on this, go back to the 93-page document and look at the comments that were given for these specific issues. Okay, then the last question was, should this happen or not happen in Montreux? Another aided question. These issues also came directly out of the 2008 comprehensive plan. There were suggestions for things to happen in the future at Montreux. And you can see, again, how they fell, distribution with population growth, for example. That's a, that's a really good one. Everybody is even on that. Almost equal numbers of people think that population growth should happen versus they don't care if it happens or not versus an equal amount saying that it should not happen. Yeah, a third, a third, a third, almost. As opposed to commercial development, 68.5% are saying that it should not happen or must not happen. Alternative housing, 63.3% say that it should not happen or it must not happen. So what you've got with your scoring in the table down below is it's kind of reverse scored. Not to mix you all up, but I thought, well, let's look at where there's an emphasis. And the emphasis was on commercial and retail development and alternative housing development, really falling because of there's two scores in that should not happen. Did you set this up, Tom? Can you define alternative housing development? The question did not define it. That was a term that came out of the 2008 comprehensive plan. And whether people were familiar with it or not, I don't know. So what's a takeaway here? Well, I would take away the fact that housing growth, development of DTJ, and population growth are really not issues. Doesn't matter to the majority for these three issues, whether it happens or not. There's nothing on this page that people would highly tout as it must happen. So, Mr. Mayor, what do you think?
Hey, we're in that vote again, we're still a lot of questions. A lot of ambiguities in this, in this whole thing. I just, a lot of contradictions and, you know, we want growth, we don't want growth. I don't know. I just, I don't want taxes to go up either, I'm back at that, so we'll see. That's why I think, you know, the next comprehensive plan, if we do want, we've got to dive in right away and start to actually come up with some action plans for that comprehensive plan if we're going to do it.
I feel like that maybe as a group, or probably maybe as a group or within the community, sort of educate ourselves and the community what it takes to not do things, and what, what are the consequences if we stay status quo? What, what are the needs, what are they asking for, that we need to find ways to afford? I think we just need more communication about where are we as Montreux?
Thank you. Alex? Kent?
Can I stand it? Or I stand with someone?
Kitty? No comment. So where to from here with this? What do we do with it? For commission and staff, really look at questions one through four at Montreux today and what can we learn from that as to what we're doing for our own. For the rest of it, I would say that what do we do with it is we make sure that we continue listening. And should we embark upon a comprehensive plan update this year, we're going to make sure that the committee that forms gets this as a baseline for them to, to launch from.
My take on the whole thing is that in stormwater streets, we've got to find money there to address those issues. It's spring's coming, heavy rains are going to come again. You know, there's potential of another Alberto. Wipe out streets, wipe out culverts underneath roads, wipe out bridges. We've got to address the stormwater issue in the future. I guess we need to address roads with more money because that's what it's going to take to bring those roads up to speed. The costly thing about roads right now in Montreux is that so many roads were paved right over dirt and no base was put down. So when we do a road, if there's no base underneath it, we've got to go all the way down to the ground and put in a good, good solid base if the road's going to last. And that's what we're having to do, and that's expensive. It's not just like repaving. Repaving is relatively cheap to what we've had to do. Stormwater, I think, is probably the number one thing in the future along with, you know, along with maintaining the roads and trying to find some money to do more with those. So Alex, get out your magic wand and come up with more money.
Any other comments, staff?
I can just speak to Commissioner Otto's question on alternative housing. I've looked at the comprehensive plan just a little bit. But essentially, that term of art was really describing anything other than single-family detached housing. So accessory dwelling units, garage apartments, row houses, duplexes, different things like that. And you already have some of that pattern just historically here in Montreux. So just to elaborate on your question of what is alternative housing? It's basically anything other than single-family detached housing as a form.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Alex, Angie, you guys have been quiet.
So lots to digest in this, certainly. I think there's a lot of Montreux today, a lot of stick in there. Staff, I appreciate that. I think that the vision of Montreux tomorrow is
That's it, sir. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you taking us through that.
Before we start the planning forward recommendations for zoning ordinance updates, y'all, I'm going to take a little break. Everybody? Okay, let's take a break about 10, 15 minutes. I'll holler, and I think in this building, you can probably hear me. We'll adjourn in about 15 minutes. I believe y'all have a deadline to adopt this on July 1st. So we felt like it would be better to start back over here, ten or so recommendations that we had, but we had to think through them. That would delay it, so we'd rather come back to this and help you act. As much as this issue is appropriate, we will come back to some of these issues. Suggestions, sir. As I said, y'all have to adopt it once you're ready first. We also did not get into, we got into some discussion, but not a lot of deliberation about steep slope and storm work. Storm work, y'all have got a study going on. Y'all will get that back, get that person that you're talking about responsible for that. She's recognized twice. She was also working in the city of Nashville, who is looking for her school. She's coming back as well. And I suspect that it's starting to slow down. It actually is not in the zoning laws, it's technically on the national system. Same thing with steep slope. Steep slope and storm work both affect the development of lots because of the setbacks that we have. So again, we will come back to the steep slope system. Again, that is not in the zoning laws. With that, I'll ask Mason and Dan. Mason is going to talk first about additional zoning. Again, that is not in the zoning. With that, I'll ask Mason and, Mason is going to talk first about additional zoning, planning developments, and y'all feel free to ask questions after this. I know that it was, it had to be confusing because we reconfigured the ordinance. When the old ordinance was with the red line, it was almost impossible to sort it out. The old ordinance, you could read and compare it. I apologize for that, hopefully y'all officially have to understand.
Yeah, let me just say, there was, in addition to some application and making a language and a number of provisions friendlier, as Bill described, there was also a lot of cleanup. That ordinance had been added to and changed and modified a lot of times over the last thirty, forty years, and not all of those pieces necessarily fit together, because nobody ever read it from, you know, cover to cover to make sure of that. Well, we did. So it's, there's a lot of reorganization that makes it hard to follow a red line now, but I think we did a thorough job. I'm here to talk to you about two new, two newer things that we did with the ordinance. That's to propose two new zoning categories for adoption as part of the ordinance. In Tom's survey, towards the end, there was a reference to striking a balance in development regulation. And the first of these new zoning categories, conditional zoning, attempts to do that in a way we think is fair and reasonable. The purpose of conditional zoning, let me first start, conditional zoning category, there are really five of them, and it's sort of an overlay category, so you can get a conditional zoning for R one, for R two, for R three, for IR, or for I, whatever zoning category your existing parcel's in, you can seek to get a conditional zoning, which, let's say you're in R two, an R two CZ zoning category for your lot. And that's only for your lot. That's a single-purpose zoning category that overlays the existing R two restrictions on your lot. So that if you're in R two CZ, you get a conditional zoning for your lot, all the R two regulations and requirements apply to your lot, unless you've asked for a specific exemption or modification of that requirement that's applicable to your lot. Let's take an example of setbacks, a controversial thing, but something that we need to do for, like Tom, is be flexible with setbacks. And let's say that you, for whatever reason, because of the steepness of the hill or whatever, you need a variance on your setback, the typical variance requirement is problematic in many ways, because you may not have a meet the hardship requirement that it requires to get a variance under the variance laws. So you can propose that in the context of conditional zoning, and request a twenty-five foot setback as opposed to a thirty-foot setback, if you put that as part of your application. All the R two requirements will be applied to you, those won't be changed, but in the case of the front setback requirement, you'll only have a twenty-five foot setback requirement. Okay? So, and the reason for this, and the reason we think conditional zoning is very, very applicable in Montreux, is because zoning categories generally are, were created to apply to similarly sized lots, and subdivisions are designed to be built in these zoning categories, and sort of all of that works, there's some uniformity. Well, there's not a lot of uniformity in Montreux, and that's the beauty of Montreux, that's the genius of Montreux, and it was, it's what makes it so wonderful. But the real truth is, our lots were created in, probably, well, they were created over eighty years before our zoning ordinance was created. So they weren't designed with zoning in mind, and zoning, as good as it is, doesn't necessarily fit every lot in Montreux. Now, we could make it fit every lot in Montreux, but then we'd make the zoning requirements so lax that it wouldn't give people the protection that we all feel we need for our property values. Conditional zoning is a way, a vehicle, without forcing someone to go into the CUP process, which again, if followed by the letter of the law, is a very difficult hurdle to get over, to get some flexibility in the way they develop their lot. Not only in Montreux do we have different lot sizes, but I can tell you, which we became aware of as we studied the problem, the topography, the different topography, really makes a big change on, you know, how practical it is to develop a lot, whether the lot's uphill or downhill, you know, makes a front setback, an entirely different propositional problem depending on the steepness of the slope. So for that reason, we think conditional zoning is good. And what basically it allows is to, in exchange for getting, not concessions, but flexibility in one or particular two requirements for your development, you, in exchange, mitigate that by making conditions to your development, and I'll explain the way that happens, and those conditions are binding on you. One thing I want to make clear before going into that is, the uses are not changed by your conditional zoning, in other words, only the uses in R two cannot be changed by making it an R two condition, okay? You can't get any new special uses that are available to a lot by R two conditional, that doesn't change, we're only talking about specific development requirements such as setbacks. But in exchange for the flexibility, a wide variety of conditions can be placed on the development by the town council or the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's an extensive process, so conditions are imposed, proposed, and can be imposed. The second, the second protection we have, or feature of the conditional zoning, is there's a process that has to be followed to make sure whatever's agreed to is compatible with and supports the community, and we don't have mistakes that hurt the surrounding properties. That process really starts out with the ordinance requiring, not requiring, but encouraging a pre-application conference with staff. And so that allows staff to look at what the applicant's proposing, give the applicant some instructions about how you go through the process, encourage the applicant to take a look at things that the applicant may need to look at in respect to whatever's proposed to this. What's not optional, what's not optional but mandatory, is a community meeting. Community meeting is required before an application is even filed, so that the applicant is able to put together preliminary plans for whatever the applicant's choosing. The applicant has to invite everyone within two hundred and fifty feet of the site, they're required to be invited by mail. Actually, a report on that meeting is required as part of an application, the application, to make sure that the meeting was held, the meeting was adequately noticed, and that the applicant got feedback from his or her neighbors as to the particular request the applicant is looking to process. The application is actually made, it's got a number of requirements, the main one is it has to be, a major part of the application is a map and a plan, and that map and the plan, there, I won't read them through, there's a lot of different requirements, but specifically, it's required to have a site plan, which locates all the structures that the person is going to place on the property, and give all the densities of that use, so that everyone can see exactly what the applicant is proposing to be built. Unlike a conditional use permit, when an applicant goes in, he gets, I get a twenty-five foot setback instead of a thirty, the applicant's not required to do anything, he just gets that release, whatever he puts up, he puts up. Under the conditional zoning, the applicant is tied to the plan that's proposed as part of his presentation and part of the ordinance itself, it becomes part of the ordinance. And so that's binding on the applicant. So if the applicant comes to the meeting and promises, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna plant these bushes here, or put this landscaping here, so that neighbor Y is not affected by moving the setback, or rejigging this or rejigging that, he's bound by that, it's gotta be that way, he's gotta build exactly that. Once the plan is approved, and it's gotta be approved by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town council, the person can only build what's approved as part of the plan. He can't add to that, he can't change that without either a process that allows the Planning and Zoning Commission to basically make minor, allow non-minor substantial changes, anything other than a minor non-substantial change is required to go through the process again. And so, at the end of the day, what happens is essentially a community conversation with staff and the camp council involved about what a landowner needs to make his lot work for reasonable development, what neighbors agree to, or get their input as to what they think is appropriate for the neighborhood. And the landowner agreeing to conditions that either he proposes or the commission requires, and the commission can be right in the middle of the meeting and say, we'll do this, but only if you agree to this, and that's it. And if you don't agree to that, it's no cigar. And so there's a negotiation that goes on, but it allows, through that negotiation, hopefully, to end up with a product that everyone is pleased with, that gives flexibility to the landowner, and also provides protection to all the surrounding property owners. It's not a cheap process, some people won't want to go through it, but at the same time, I don't think the process is anymore, other than having the community meeting, the process is no more, probably less involved than going through the hillside, steep slope development in terms of the maps and exhibits and all this stuff you gotta go through, you know, the map you've gotta prepare for this application is much less intense than the map you'd have to prepare for hillside development. So it's, it's not an extremely high burden, and we think that it's a way to solve the conundrum we've got here in Montreux of wanting to have uniform zoning ordinances that are highly protective and not be reducing our overall setback standards, at the same time making room for lots that are diverse, we know they're diverse, topography that's diverse, and allowing those landowners to reasonably develop that property in a way that's consistent with our neighborhoods, and in a way that our neighbors are able to participate in the project. So that's the conditional zoning. The second new zoning category.
Mason?
Yes?
How does that differ from what we're doing now with a neighbor wanting to move into the setback and going to the Board of Adjustment with a request?
Okay. Well, first, it, probably the conditional, not probably, conditional zoning can affect more items than just conditional use permit, but let me tell you, frankly setbacks will probably be the major thing that they're affecting. Here's the difference between it. Conditional use permit under the law, and I'm just a Florida lawyer, but my understanding, don't care about my laws, is under Florida law, which you can't tell me, the standard for getting a conditional use permit is a high bar. It's frankly, if you follow the law, it's, 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 it's very, very hard to get it, okay? It's, it's very, very, you can get one if you can't fit the minimum, minimum structure size on your lot because of the setbacks, and it's just sort of impossible. Otherwise, it's really hard to legitimately. Now, what happens in practice is, in towns, and I'm sure that, you know, Scott and others familiar with zoning, what really happens is, from time to time in a town, you'll get a Planning and Zoning Board that will approve a lot of things that shouldn't approve. And then, five years later, you'll have a different composition of that board, and they're not approving anything, and you get a lot of inconsistency in the process. And there's a lot of pressure on the Planning and, Board of Zoning Adjustment, I'm sorry, Boarding of Zoning Adjustment, for a few years will not approve anything, you know, its composition changes, personalities change, they'll approve some stuff they shouldn't be approving, if they follow, if they follow the letter of the law. It's, 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 it's used a lot of times for changes that really don't qualify but get approved. You get a lot of inconsistency in the process. What you also get in the process is really no assurance on the city's part about what the city's gonna get when the person actually builds, what they build with the reduced setback, because there is no, there's no way to impose a condition of a binding site plan necessarily. So what the conditional zoning does is make up a process that doesn't have that high bar, that high burden of proof, you can come in, you don't have to prove hardship, okay? You just have to say, here's what I'd like to do, it requires me reducing my setback by feet, here's the reason I'm doing it, here's what I'm gonna do to mitigate that, and, 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 and I've met with the neighbors, they like it, here's, here's the design, here's the set plan, I agree to this site plan, and with that sort of consensus, it moves forward.
Mason, does conditional use permit, does it, is it used for additions or alterations to an existing structure or just a new?
If a site, if a setback is required, it's used for alterations and additions as well?
Is there, is there a cost involved? I know a lot of people won't go try to get a variance right now through the Board of Adjustment simply because of the cost?
Well.
Cost in reply?
There, there's a cost, they have to come up with a plan, they have to, yes, there's a cost, and I'm not gonna hide the law, and when there's a cost, if you're, if you're on a steep slope ordinance, I built them a steep, I can tell you, they cost, you've gotta get the studies. This is not as expensive as the steep slope ordinance, you don't have to though, hire a lawyer to make legal arguments, okay, because there's no legal issue, all right? What you've gotta do is hire a planner to help you put together a plan, and put together a, to file for the application, and to make your neighbors happy. So instead of, instead of dealing with the legal issue of hardship, which again, if the law is followed carefully, is a very difficult one, what you really do is you put your resources into making a plan of course. And I think that's a big difference between the two processes. Anything else? Okay, the second new zoning category that we proposed is somewhat similar to conditional zoning in the sense that it's plan-centered, but its purpose is different. The purpose is to provide developers with flexible development regulations and standards that allow them to be innovative and provide excellence in their design and community plan for the communities. It's not designed for a lot, PUD is designed for a larger piece of property. And as Bill indicated earlier, the most logical piece of property that we might see a PUD zoning category for is the grand property, or the MRA has a property up at the top of Lookout, or the R three property at the end of Graybeard, and maybe a few others where there are four or five lots. But it's not an overlay district like the conditional zone, it's not a, it's not a PUD for R one, it's its own zoning category. its own zoning category. It's unique in and to itself. So, whatever this PUD is, it's a whole PUD master plan. And that master plan will include all the things that can happen, can't happen and can't happen in that zoning category. It is a very expensive process. And so, it's typically only used on larger tracts of land. It's extensively used in Florida. I was involved in my legal career in a 30,000-acre community. Every single acre of it was zoned PUD.
So, are you saying that this second type, what you call plan-centric zoning, is a PUD?
It's PUD.
Plan-urban zone?
That's right. And the reason for a PUD is it will give a developer flexibility in the uses. You can have, for example, a small commercial use in an otherwise residential development. You can have mixes of uses. You can have townhomes right next to single-family homes. You can have clustering of housing where you've got a lot of homes that are very close together. Take, for example, Cheshire, just US 9, all of those large homes clustered small together. That sort of clustering is something you can't do in a traditional zoning category. I'm sure that's a PUD zone there. So, it allows for design innovation, design excellence. Some people call it excellence, some people might like the design, but the people that buy it like it. And it allows also for the developer to take advantage of special opportunities that the site might allow. It provides generally for a lot more open space than regular zoning provides. Generally, PUDs provide for two or three times the open space that, in Florida anyway, in my experience, that normal subdivisions provide. So, it's open space-oriented, cluster-oriented in many cases. As I said, it's plan-centric. It requires a master plan, a PUD master plan. That's what the ordinance requires. And that master plan is in effect, these specialized zoning ordinance for that piece of property. There are a lot of requirements in the ordinance. I won't go through them. But I'll mention, there's required components, there's optional components. But I would like to point out a few. One is that the town administrator or the town council in this whole process can require a traffic impact analysis. So, if you've got something at the top of Graybeard or any of the three properties I mentioned, you're going to have some traffic impacts. It's part of the application. They can require, either you or the town council can require a traffic impact analysis to study that. As I said, it's not cheap. It requires a lot of professional involvement. No, not going to order. The amount of open space and recreational space must be identified in the plan, typically is. If any of that space is conservation space or preservation areas, that has to be identified in the plan. If any of that area, for example, you've got drainage areas that are to be maintained by association or that area, you've got to have a plan for funding the maintenance of those drainage areas if they're going to be privately maintained. You also have to have, as part of the plan, transition plans for the areas around the PUD, how it transitions in terms of buffering the surrounding uses so that everything's compatible. It's, and staff obviously can require other matters as part of the plan. So, it's a thorough planning process designed to make sure the development works in terms of all the various concerns the city has within the development. But at the same time, give the developer flexibility to create a product that's what the developer thinks is going to be unique and meet the requirements or desires of the market.
So, using your two examples, which are both R3 right now, correct?
Right.
Would-
Well, no, they, I don't, I have to see the map.
Okay. They would be rezoned as a PUD or-
Yes.
That's exciting to me. It's, well, it offers- Absolutely. That's why it's exciting. It's this possibility for developers to come in here and actually do something that adds to the population, adds to the tax base, and you know, it's well-planned, it's laid out. You'll know what the impact of traffic is and so forth. But I think it's exciting.
That's it. Dan?
Thank you, thank you. And it occurred to me as I was listening to Mason talk, you've got three lawyers up here. We've kind of been living with this animal for two years. And we have certain language, H R God, and some other language we use. I wanted to back up and just clarify a couple of things, make sure we're all on the same page and y'all understand what we're talking about. And Scott, you know, we already know this, but just to make sure we're all on the same starting point. North Carolina passed a law last year, a new zoning ordinance law that required y'all to pass this new ordinance about June of August. And that's, that all happened after we started our process. It's just working down the road, I guess, and most of it started this process. So, that's why you've got that deadline, this new zoning ordinance law that requires every town and city to adopt their own new ordinance in accordance with the new state law about June of August. So, I just wanted to clarify that, just so y'all can understand it. The second thing is some terms that we use, and I may be using some in my presentation here. Under the current ordinance, there are conditional uses, which under the new ordinance and the law, can turn into special uses. So, that's just a term that everybody needs to understand. I don't know if it changes somewhat. Under your current ordinance and new ordinance, there's a chart of uses, permitted uses, and these, what you can do, R1, R3, whatever it is. And you really have two options on that chart. One is what's permitted on the right, so the house, the rest of the ground, R1, this one. Then you have what now we call special uses, so the S in that chart, whereas the old chart, it was conditional use, basically the same, but there was a change in terminology. And special use is not on my right. You actually have to get a special use permit. So, a little few more to jump through, as long as you meet all the requirements and ordinance for that side, you can get that. So, theoretically, it's supposed to be easier to get than, for example, a variance, which I know there are used a lot, which is a variance, it's sort of an exception to the zoning district itself. I just want to clarify that, make sure we're all on the same page as I'm starting by. Sorry, Kitty, can you hear me? Okay, sorry. So, now to get what I was going to talk about. One of the things I noticed in Tom's survey results, one of the things that somebody mentioned was to make the ordinance more friendly as the deck of a building. And Mason already said, I think that was sort of my guiding principle through what we did is to simplify, clarify, organize it, make it easier to read and understand. Even though it's still a complicated document, there's no kidding around that. But we did try to make it more friendly, and I hope we accomplished that. Another thing is that I've heard so many times before we even started this process and during the process, and I myself have even voiced to some people, maybe some of you, that there, we keep hearing there are a lot of lots that are unusable because of the current zoning ordinance. I also, myself, have remarked several times, including, it hasn't affected my own house once I renovated prior to retiring up here six years ago, that when the zoning ordinance was adopted back in 85, probably, if I guess, I don't know, just with information back itself, probably the majority of the houses came not conforming at that point, if not lots as well. Our house, for example, just the personal example, the setback line was in the elevator living room. So, half of our house is in the setback and came not conforming immediately once the zoning ordinance was adopted back in 1985. And I suspect that, as I say, the vast majority of homes are that way. So, one of the guiding principles that we went through this process was to listen to that, to try to address those concerns, to make these unusable lots usable in some way or another. And we discussed a lot of things, as Bill and Mason said. I don't want to mention that, but with the setbacks, just providing a reduction. We got some blowback from some of the towns, people some comments saying, "We've done it for 40 years now, you shouldn't be changing the rules." And the little game of people that have been buying about 40 years. But of course, the flip side is people buying it, no laws prior to that. And so, there are a lot of arguments both ways. So, at the end of the day, we elected and are not recommending blanket changes to the setbacks, except for the one example that Mason mentioned, related to Woodford District, Beddingwood District. So, we're not making it recommend that. However, what we have tried to do, and I think we've successfully done that, is created some opportunities, some exceptions, if you want to call it, but at least some ways for people to use these quote-unquote unusable lots, to be able to add on to their houses if it's already sitting in the setback. And some of the ways are, Mason, this is talking about two of them, but one of them, the conditional zoning district, that just creates a little one-lot zone and has some special rules happen. Too many of them they jumped through hoops to get there. But at least it gives them the option to use what, under current ordinance, would be an unusable lot because there's nobody to meet the dimensional requirements or the setback requirements on both. Another way we've done it is to go to the section that we've created, and that's what I want to get to. I was at the second call, but yeah, we're not getting to where I was supposed to be talking about. It's a section, Article 10, entitled Nonconformities. This was in the old section, in the old ordinance, it was, you know, Section 16. And we followed a lot of, we did change it dramatically in most situations. But if there's one point that I want to make that I think was critically important, is under the old ordinance, if there was a lot that was too small, to people, we called it the dimensional requirements, it was just didn't have the proper, the middle of lot size, it had a middle of frontage or whatever, it was an unusable lot. We can all agree with that. The ordinance encouraged people to join a lot, to combine them into one lot, to do things like that. But essentially, they could not build on it without getting a variance or jumping through hoops like that. One of the first things we said in our ordinance is that those lots may be used as building site, period, there and there. And this is a big change in the current movement. And so, that's another option that now these lots can be used. We basically said, okay, it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements, but if it existed in 1985 as a legally legal lot, it had been defeated from somebody, if it existed in 1985, or if a subsequent change to the same ordinance, and I don't think that's happened, but if some subsequent, if it does state, if some subsequent amendment to the ordinance after 85 rendered it unusable, we're still saying it's a valid legal lot and can be used. They still have to meet all the other requirements. And it may make it extremely difficult for them to build on it. I mean, if they still got to meet the setbacks, they may now have a little sliver of a lot, a part of the land that can actually be used for building. But it can be used, whereas right now it cannot. So, we think that's significant. The other parts of that nonconformity, language of ordinance, what nonconformity, the new Article 10, prior Section 1616, much of it is very similar. There are some changes. For example, if a house burns down or is destroyed by weather, natural attacks of nature, in some way it has to be rebuilt. Of course, they can rebuild it, could have done it in the old. One change in the old one, they had to be rebuilt within one year of the event. We're now just saying it has, construction has to be initiated with one year. So, extend it a little bit, a little more friendly here, I think, as far as what they can do and cannot do. But a lot of the rest of the language is, as far as nonconforming uses, they can continue, nonconforming structures can continue, nonconforming lots can continue. But you still have to want to add on, if you want to build a new house, you have to meet the requirements, current requirements and setbacks and so forth. There's another exception that would have helped me a lot six years ago, but unfortunately did not. But Bill touched on it earlier, in essence, in Section 601. And essentially, what it said before, and I would- In the prior ordinance, it was 616, probably, this is called Special Frontier Requirements in Developed Areas. And I'm sure y'all know, most of Montreat is a developed area. There aren't a lot of, like, lots left. So, it said that if the houses in the area were closer to the road, let's say it's a 30-foot setback. But let's say all the houses on one street is, it happens in many parts of Montreat, are all within 20 feet of the front setback. So, they're all already in violation of what's passed. And what if that person wants to add on or do something, like, when we get any closer to the road, it'll say it could be aligned with this road, but it's now in violation, so we need to do it. But what the ordinance said, the old ordinance said, was a setback requirement shall not apply where the average front setback on already built upon lots, within the same block in zoning district and fronting on the same side of the street that's less than the minimum. Well, I remember going through this with the prior president administrator, what is a block in Montreat? We don't have many blocks, I don't think, if you find a block. And so, it was left up to his interpretation. And he said, "We'll look at houses on both sides of the street, going about five houses in each direction." So, I had to basically do a survey to survey all the houses on that side of the street and that side of the street, both directions, about five. And houses downed up. And we came up with an average of 27.5 feet. So, that became my setback, 27.5, because most of the houses on the street are close to the road, 30 feet. So, what we are recommending in the new ordinance is that you only have to look at the houses on either side of you, which makes sense. I mean, if there are two houses on either side of you, or 20 feet from the road, why should you be 30 feet? And then if there's no house on the other side of you, it's on one house on one side and one on the other, you take the average of the two, and make the lot use 30 feet, which is, if a house is more than 30 feet behind the two, it's 30 feet. But if you're on the corner lot, you only have one house beside you. If it's 20 feet from the road, you can be 20 feet from the road. It just makes sense. It's fair and create a lot of hard burning expense. And I don't, I'm not the only one to say that. But that's really all I had to talk about, was the nonconformities in that special lot thing, just to give you an example. But I think both of them are examples of what we were trying to accomplish as we went through this process, was to create some options, some opportunities. Some people on the committee just really wanted a blanket reduce the whole setbacks. And that's still up in discussion. We'll talk about it probably in the future. But most of the people, the majority of the commission felt that rather than reducing the blanket all over the city, the whole zoning districts, that would create options and opportunities to get around those. And I think we've done that, the nonconformity language. We've got some that Scott has rocked our trees and trees and rest of them. Or some people just want to add on, cover a deck or something like that, that at first blush, it looks like they're not going to be able to do it. But I think this Section 609, that's referred to by using the setback because the zoning properties are all close to the road. They may be able to get landed by that way, not have to jump through hoops. Hopefully, we've created it, made it more friendly, as everybody has asked us to do. That's all I have to say, guys. Thanks.